All the Board of Supervisors to order. Mr. Hohn, may I have a roll call, please?
Supervisor Geomi, Supervisor White.
Here.
Supervisor Shute.
Here.
Mayor Bagwell, you have got your quorum.
Thank you so much. We're gonna move on, and he is ready, because he is on it. So Pastor Haskins, give us a great words of wisdom this morning.
Let's pray. Loving gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for your many blessings. The steady rain that falls is a reminder that every good and perfect gift comes down from you. We pray for our mayor and supervisors today as they consider the issues that they're going to make a difference in our community, and I just pray that you grant them the understanding and wisdom that they need to make good and wise decisions, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you so much. Would you also do us the honor of leading us in the pledge?
Sure, follow me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, and have a beautiful day. We're now on to our opening public comment, and I have Mr. French signed up. Denny?
No problem.
Good morning.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Board of Supervisors. Denny French, Carson City, Nevada. I had just come from quite a bit of the legislative aspect of things, and I've been able to meet a lot of our Assembly and Senators, and as most of you may already know, one of my main topics are things like artificial turf and the situations as providing for the safety and the overview of the children in those sports activities on artificial turf. As artificial turf moves into this community, I've done more study on, and so have the EPA, the CPS, C, the CDC, and their findings are that while associations are acknowledging that they needed to train their coaches, advise their parents, and keep their players aware of their own consciousness towards their thirst, their fatigue, and to advise their coaches and their playing mates if there are difficulties. One of the things that's not happening while it's online, and I didn't get a chance to discuss this with the parks, is that it's not getting postings on those facilities. I believe with a lot of different states, cities, that posting the identification of heat stroke symptoms, heat exhaustion, keeping hydrated, making sure those children have adults that are checking those temperatures, not just a maybe random parent that might say, oh, it's 80 degrees out, maybe we should check the turf's heat. We have to put into our development as we move forward with artificial turf regulation so that those associations have dedicated individuals that would watch those things. Also, as I've looked into the warranty issue, if you do not dot your i's and cross your t's and keep track of every time you put something on that field, you will lose your warranties. You won't have a chance. Also, because the materials aren't necessarily matched for their compatibility, you may have a piece of infill that's gonna tear your field up because the turf itself is not compatible. So your use, your wear, is gonna be dependent on what you put on it, how you tend it, and I really think that we've gotten ourselves in way over our ability to keep track of things. Another subject that's very big to me are the tree loss. The tree loss investigation or study that was made after the fact shows that we didn't give those trees a chance. First, we didn't pick indigenous trees, and then we did not necessarily plant them well. We didn't choose the locations, we didn't choose the trees, and we didn't do oversight. We strangled a lot of them, putting binders on to keep them in their early growth so that it gets steady. But just like a puppy, you can't put a one-size collar on and not check for the growth. And they didn't. In many cases, trees failed or were stressed to death. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. French. I don't have anyone else signed up for public comment, but let me ask, just in case. Nope. Okay, we'll move on then to Agenda Item Six, Approval of Our Minutes of October 16th. Does anyone have any corrections or changes that we need to make? Seeing none, Supervisor Geomi, a motion, please.
I move to approve Carson City Board of Supervisors meeting minutes for the 16th of October 2025 as presented.
I second.
I have a motion and several seconds. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say no. Let the record reflect that was unanimous. Great. And then if you could join me on the floor, we'll do our length of service certificates.
Years of service. I love them all. All right, we are gonna start with 15 years. Where is Eric? Come on, oh, he's hiding in the back.
Yay!
All that you do for us, because he's here all the time at this facility, always lending a hand to everyone, helping anybody that's using the community center that, you know, sometimes they don't always know what they're supposed to do or how to get it done, but they do know Eric will help them. So, and I'll let Dan do the formal, but I just wanted to throw that in there, and thank you so much for all you do.
So we're recognizing Eric today for 15 years of service. However, he actually started almost 21 years ago as an on-call tech for the theater. So he's been here for pretty much most of his professional life. So we'd just like to recognize that service. He actually started at this little storage closet out here was his office. And even to this day, he still prefers to work in the dark. Honestly, has to turn his lights on in his office. So just to add kind of what you've already acknowledged, Eric is here in the community center, he's behind everything, every event that we do, that most of you have been to, the health fairs or anything like that, he's always there for us. He probably set the sound, the lights, the tables, the chairs, and all those things. And just for that, he now has 15 years of full-time service here. He's started as a coordinator for the theater, and then the records manager for this facility. Now overseeing the youth programs and all the wonderful things that he does. So we're appreciative of Eric and his time and what he's done for this community center, but also for the community. And I look forward to many more years.
15, Eric. Oh, I'm greedy, right? 15 more. Yeah. And how about Sean's electrical communication? In the military, wow. For your service all the way around, right? Thank you so much for that. So, you know, we have to ask you too, because you only have 15 years in hers. 15 more. Oh, all right, you're gonna give a... I couldn't see it. I don't know what happened there.
No, Sean did. Sean came to us 15 years ago after an honorable career in the U.S. Navy, brought his skills to us in our controls group, and that group is usually not seen that much. They are responsible for our electrical automation of our critical water and wastewater system. And so Sean also has involved heavily in our fiber optics system, and also the network inside of our radio communication system. So very, very quiet, unseen group, but he needs that group, so appreciate your help, Sean.
So with 10 years of service, which still seems wrong to me in my mind, 10. Come on, John Costello. But thank you for all you do. I hear nothing but great things about Ranger programs that we have, and I know that starts with the leader setting the stage and the tone of what it's gonna be for the Parks Department. So job well done.
Thank you.
I have to bring this up, but John first started with us as our open space ranger, focusing on the river corridor and our more than 7,000 acres of open space that we're so lucky to have in the community. He really addressed a lot of issues, misuse of our land and illegal websites, head-on. He took us on and has made this really a better place for the whole community. Due to John's outstanding work ethic and his vision for the program, he was promoted in 2021 to senior park ranger. And under John's direction, he's developed, in my opinion, one of the best Ranger programs in the state. Carson City's interpretive programs are unique, they're creative, and they're so popular. Almost everything we have has a leading list, and everybody wants to attend. The level of training and investment that he's had as a park ranger is unprecedented. He really cares about his team, and he makes sure that they're safe, and they have everything that they need available to keep them going. The impact the Rangers have on the community is really just immeasurable. It means so much to everybody here, but especially the community. John speaks at a lot of conferences. He really shares his knowledge with his peers and helps grow the profession and other professionals in the state. His responsibilities also include the rifle and pistol range, which is one of the city's most popular recreational facilities. He's really turned that into something that the community can be proud of, and that's thanks to John's vision and hard work. He has a real great passion for the profession, and he cares so much about his team and his coworkers, and he's really appreciated and respected by so many in the community. In his spare time, he is a diehard Cubs fan. He bobs. I think he's been in Guinness Book of Records for how many weddings he's been in. He is a busy guy, but he's also a devoted husband, and we're just so thankful and proud to have him as part of our community. Okay, and coming up to the back end, with only five years, we definitely need to get 25 more. Oh, right, that's kind of a theme here, because our employees, we love them, and we want them to stay with the city as long as possible. So how about Cassie Mason? Okay, she has the certificate. Thank you for all you do for us. We really appreciate it.
Not many know what the recorder does for the Carson City, but we're a revenue generating unit, and I just wanted to read a couple of statements by her parents. Today, I have the privilege of recognizing someone who's become an essential part of the Carson City Recorder's office. Cassie, as our senior court recorder, has been with our office for five years, and in that time, she has had a remarkable lasting impact on our team, our operations, and our community. From her very first day, Cassie brought a level of enthusiasm, common sense, and bright energy that immediately elevated the working environment in the office. She approaches every challenge with steady logic and attitude, two qualities that make her not only incredibly effective, but also an absolute pleasure to work alongside. Cassie is deeply passionate about preserving the historical records of Carson City. She understands the documents we maintain, property records, maps, mortgage records, and more are just not pieces of paper. They're pieces of the community's history, and it's important. Going back to the mid-1800s, her pride and after seeing organization and archival integrity ensures that these stories remain protected for generations. But just as important as Cassie's unwavering commitment to customer service, whether she's helping somebody at the counter or over the phone, Cassie brings patience, clarity, and genuine care to every interaction that she has. She represents the best of public service, always willing to go the extra mile, and always going in with kindness. Her professionalism, reliability, and team-centered spirit make for an impact every single day. Cassie is the type of employee who makes the entire office better, responsive, thoughtful, dedicated, delivering excellent service for the city. Cassie, on behalf of the entire Court to Quarter elections team, thank you for your five years of outstanding service.
A little bit too big a picture, but if you have family and friends and coworkers that wanna celebrate with them, come on in our picture. I'm ready, because Cassie's, you know, really good at keeping these historical records, so we all have a little honor of her. Oh, really? I tell you, I know. Good job, leader. I want everybody to get in the library. Let me emerge. I am awesome.
Okay. Give him just a change. Okay, we're gonna come back to order on the dais. We're now on to our consent agenda. I didn't have any requests for an item to be removed, but again, one quick second. Okay, Supervisor Geomi, a motion, please.
Move to approve the consent agenda consisting of Item 8A, 9A, 10A, 11A, 11B, 11C, 12A, 13A, and 14A, all as presented.
I have a motion in a second for approval of the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Let the record reflect it was unanimous. We're now on to Agenda Item 16A, which is discussion and possible action regarding approval of the John D. Winters Centennial Park Master Plan. Come on up, Nick and Jen, I'm assuming. Okay. I don't know, the little thing doesn't have a color.
Hello, good morning, Supervisors. Mayor Nick Wentworth, Carson City Parks Project Manager, for the record. So, got a PowerPoint for you here. You all received the master plan draft in your packet. It looks the same.
I know.
Shouldn't it be red?
No, red is bad. There, there we go. You start coming, come on.
I did.
There you go. Has to be red. I'm like, I knew there wasn't any color. Oops, not colored, it's not good. Okay.
So you've all received the draft master plan in your packet. Looking for discussion and possible action regarding approval of the John D. Winters Centennial Park Master Plan. So just give you a kind of a brief overview of what happened here. These are the existing site conditions up there. We have a lot of drainage to deal with that we've seen the negative effects of in the past. A lot of erosion and sediment coming off the hillside onto those upper fields that we've had to correct. We've got wind from every direction. We have, obviously, the golf course, archery range, a lot of other components in the area. We have an additional 20 acres at the, near the lower fields that is park's property that would go into the final master plan that we can develop down there. Also looked at for some of the larger events, the need for some emergency escape, if you want to call it, or egress to get out, whether that's fireworks or a large softball tournament or anything like that. So we wanted to explore secondary access coming in past the archery range there. We do have some, well, I mentioned the drainage issues. We are currently in construction of the four upper softball fields. That is in progress. That started early to mid-October. The eight tennis courts are complete, and currently, we have a contractor in there wrapping up the last of my ARPA-funded projects to replace the restroom at the tennis courts, do a little bit of work to that plaza like a hitting wall that we had removed the previous structure. So I'll start with the lower section. We included this area for multi-use fields. As many of you probably know, we only have three sports complexes in Carson City, Pete Livermore, Governor's Field, and Centennial. So we have to be selective or wanted to make smart choices about what we do with that amount of land and make the most of it, given that we only have the three sports complexes. There is a need for multi-use fields everywhere. We're kind of limited at Pete Livermore as to what we may be able to develop in the future, and thought that the multi-use fields would be the best use of all this property down there, and the survey that we conducted reflected that need from the community as well. We spread the parking out a little bit better. Some of, a lot of this was based or I used some of my observations from the other sports complexes. I spend a lot of time at Governor's Field. I'm on the Little League Board, and my kids play Pop Warner football, and parking there is not friendly, with it all being on one end of the complex. People walk to the opposite end of the complex for football games and things like that. So tried to spread the parking out. We've got multiple restroom buildings here. This parking is equivalent to what is at Governor's Field, roughly. Well, it exceeds what's at Governor's Field. There's about 250 spaces there. This exceeds 300. We've got a playground, also incorporated some user group storage buildings. I'm not afraid to admit I stole that idea from Stotich Park in Gardenville, which works really great. That is one of the issues we have at all of our sports complexes is a lack of user group storage and places for those groups to store their equipment and gear and materials and all that stuff, whether it's off-season or during their season. So got a couple of those buildings in there. Also included a promenade, as we called it, in the Mills Park Master Plan to go, which would go between multi-use fields one and two. So that area would be set up for vendors, food trucks, or maybe it's teams in between their games. They got a morning game and an afternoon game. Most of those families aren't gonna go anywhere. They can set up easy-ups, water, utilities, all that stuff in there. Give teams a place to hang out, kill some time as a group where they're not taking off. Did anybody have any questions? I'm not sure if you want to go through questions for the lower park here or at the end or whatever's easiest for.
Thank you. I love this project. I was just wondering, the restrooms, how many stalls approximately, do you know?
So the master plan really is a kind of a high elevation goal. This doesn't get into, this doesn't include construction drawings. You'll see that in the cost estimate as well. We've inflated a lot of these numbers. We're, for example, the Mills Park Master Plan, we haven't even entered the design phase yet.
Okay, so it's to be determined.
Yes, exactly. So once we get into actual design of the facilities, once funding is available, then we would look a little bit harder at, you know, how many stalls are included in each restroom? How big is that playground? Maybe the parking needs to be a little bit bigger. So a lot of those finite details don't really need to be decided at this point until it came time to design the actual.
And I thank you for having the parking spread out, you know, in addition to make it easier, safer, more convenient. It also allows for better drainage, all of that. So thank you.
So I would like to talk about, on this one, you have dog parks, a large one and a small one, and I noticed their location. And so part of the discussion I think that we need to have is, I see this park hopefully being used a lot, and that its emphasis is on sports and bike activity, a lot of activity, not passive sitting in a park reading a book or having a picnic. I mean, that's, this particular facility is, I'm a assuming to be very active, tennis, things in which I'm not sure I see that dogs and those types of activities mix well. And where you have the dog park is next to a golf course, and I'm very positive that they don't want barking dogs while they're getting ready for a tee shot or something. And we're very lucky in Carson City. We just did a whole dog ordinance that we worked extremely hard on, and I think Carson City's done a fantastic job, because we have like 18 park locations where people can bring their dogs, and we're doing the new one with the three acres for large and small dogs on Airport Road. So I just question that that's a good use for the activities at this park. I'm seeing more conflict than gain, and so I just bring that up for us as a discussion point. I recognize that people say yes in a survey, but it's all the way asked in a survey. There was no context to the question. Is it your most important? There was no ranking, there's no based on costs, there's nothing out there. So if you ask me would I like one, of course, I want it all. So I just think that's a discussion point we need to have on this plan. Supervisor Giomi?
Nick, you mentioned multiple restrooms. Did you mean multiple in the whole plan? Or am I, I only saw the one, and that was one of the questions that I had.
In the lower?
In the lower area, I only see the one, and that was on this, oh, there's.
10 is listed as a concession plus restroom, so you'd have two, potentially.
Yeah, okay. That answered that question. I don't necessarily have the same concerns as the mayor. I think the only potential conflict is the barking dogs compared to the golf course, but I can tell you having golf there that the road noise is probably as loud as any dogs would be with people driving on Highway 50. You can hear that, you know. So, you know, it's not a hill to die on for me if there's opposition to putting the dog park there. I guess the question I would ask you is, is it, it's an odd piece of land. It feels like a good use. Other than that, I don't know you can cram another sports field in there, and keep parking there. And the other concern I have about cramming a sports field in there is that you're going to have people be crossing the street. And so that would be the concern I have if we put a sports field there. The dog park seems like a separate kind of activity from the fields that will draw people who aren't going to be going back and forth across the street. So that, to me, it seems like it fits. If we put something there other than a dog park, to me, it would have to be something that doesn't interact with the stuff going on across the street, because otherwise we're encouraging people to cross. And I, you know, I play softball, I play golf, people drive quickly down Arrowhead Road, probably quicker than they should. So that is kind of a concern I have if we are going to ex-nay the dog park and put something else there, that it would, it would have to be something that were sort of self-contained. I feel like a dog park is, is self-contained, and I feel like it fits. That's just my two cents.
Supervisor Horton?
Well, I tend to agree with the mayor. I think we have an ample number of dog parks available throughout the city, and I think there's a better use for that property. And even if you made it a dog park, people are going to cross the street. That's going to happen anyway. But I think we need to take another look at that site and see what we could do with it. I don't think that's the best use for that area. Again, I tend to agree that we should keep it sports-centered and draw that crowd, so.
Supervisor White?
Thank you. To the question of restrooms, I know we're not in the actual design phase. 450 parking stalls, probably three people per car. That tells me we'd need 18 bathroom stalls. 75 people per stall.
Supervisor Shute?
Since we're talking dog parks, I actually am comfortable with the dog park. And while I appreciate the concern about noise, I see that there's going to be noise coming from the fields, the play, the tournaments, that kind of thing. So I don't see barking as anything that would be more disruptive than the surrounding area. And I, yes.
But you think sport, I don't, I don't think sports and dogs go together. So that's just, it's not just the barking. I don't think that the facility itself, we're trying to do active sports, baseball, those types of things. I don't want dogs left in cars. I don't, I really don't want to encourage the mix of dogs with sports. I think they're not, we don't allow it at Pete Livermore Park, right? You're not, you're not taking dogs. It's not, I don't think it's fair, either one, the dog, or the people playing sports. So it's not just the barking noise, but it was just, I don't think it's a good mix, and that we're working extremely hard in this city to create parks of specific purpose, which I love. Like pickleball's going to be in Mills Park, and we're going to have tennis out at Centennial, and we've got a ballpark here at Governor's, and we've got soccer out at Livermore. I think it's really great that we're organizing our fields and our activities to fit together so that they're harmonious. And so I guess that's really what I'm trying to drive at. And when I looked at the plan and said, whoa, $46 million, it's a, that's a big lift for a master plan, and I get that that is so wonderful, because it lets us go and get grants and everything. But having a dog park for 2.7 million of that estimate just doesn't fit for me, right? So I'm like, woo, how do we have something in the master plan that we might be able to achieve, might be able to present to funders, and/or pave roads? I mean, I, right? So I just look at everything.
I mean, it's not the same money. We know that's not, it's not the same money. I mean, to conflate the money we're going to spend on this with road money is not.
Are you saying we'll never put any general fund into this project?
I'm not saying that. We haven't decided on funding. I mean, we're not putting any general fund into Mills Park.
Right. We got $15 million grant.
Right. So, I mean, I, you know, I don't, I, I think it's misleading to say that. I'm not disagreeing with you. There's, obviously, we have road issues. I just, I think that's misleading. You know, the, if we don't want a dog park there, like I said, to me, it's not that big a deal. I don't think any of your arguments, in my mind, hold water. But if we don't want it there, just for the sake of not wanting it there, it's not that big a deal to me. I just, I think we should be, you know, factual about what we're asking for. Was anything else programmed there during the process? Did you consider anything else there? Did we sort of throw that in because it was kind of a off-to-the-side space that you can't really do anything else with?
I think that, I think that sums it up more than anything. There's the road separation from the sports complex. Totally agree to answer your question. There are no pets allowed at Governor's Field or Pete Livermore, other than service animals. But it was just kind of an after the, I don't want to say after the fact, but during the design process, it was like, totally agree with you Supervisor Horton, doesn't make any sense to put a sports field over there. You don't want families and kids crossing that road, especially building it out like this. You're going to have more traffic there. It was kind of a separate use in a functional way to utilize, you know, 1.7 acres, whatever it is. There's a pretty significant population of people that go to Centennial to walk dogs around the Upper Loop, or go utilize the trailhead. There's people that go there during the day. Sports complexes get used primarily for sports in the evenings and on the weekends, but there's this whole other daytime crowd, if you want to call it that, that shows up and uses these facilities that we can't possibly police 100% of the time.
Right, right.
Of course, we don't want people, or pets out on sports fields, ever. But it was just a, hey, this would potentially work over here. That doesn't mean that, we can prioritize the different phases that are laid out in the cost estimate of this in any way we want to. I have my own ideas about that. I think the upper needs to be finishing the tennis courts, finishing the softball fields. The asphalt up there is atrocious. Some of those are, the drainage infrastructure is my number one priority there. We need to protect all these investments. It doesn't have to be, no single part of this master plan has to be built along with everything else. There's different components that work together, but, no, it was just a way of potentially using that space. I don't realistically see, I haven't come up with any ideas that would be a better use. It's hard to tie it in, like I said, to the sports complex with the road bisecting that area.
What if we just put it, leave some of the parking, leave the, number nine is a picnic area with shade structure, right? Picnic shelter. What if we put a little bit of grass, two or three more of those shade structures, and call it good? Just make it a multi-use area that someone could.
We could do the same we did with Mills Park and label that area as an opportunity zone, that leaves it up in the air, is to, you know, an area where, if we come up with a better idea later, we don't know what the future holds.
I'd be comfortable, I'd be comfortable with that.
I like that better, too. I could live with that.
So switch that entire.
Maybe leave the parking, because I'm concerned we don't have enough parking.
And that might be the opportunity we need, when, once you've built these multi-use fields. I see the 108-stall lot to the southwest. I asked repeatedly, I want that parking. We can make much better use of that triangular shape, and maybe not double that parking lot, but we can fit a lot more in there.
On the, on the dog park area, you mean?
On the opposite, on the bottom left, but same thing. Maybe that still isn't enough, and maybe we want to add an overflow parking lot over there.
Maybe it's even a dirt overflow parking lot, and we don't pave it, and we don't put a shade structure, and we don't spend 2.7 million dollars. We spend a couple hundred thousand to clear it, grade it, and people can be overflow parking. Maybe that's the best use for it.
I kind of like, I kind of like that really well.
So you want to just label it opportunity zone with no real clear defined?
Yeah, I think you're, I think you're on to the right path here, too, is to recognize as you build and use in, because obviously, we're not, well, I don't know, we may have a benefactor that will give us 46 million, but it's, you might see as the use comes, no, we really need more parking, and I like the idea of that.
I mean, I think you should put some infrastructure to it. I would, I would definitely include, I mean, I know we're not at that detail yet, but keep in mind that we want some infrastructure there, so, you know, water line, or a, you know, electricity, so that if we did put something that needed lights, or it's there at the time we're doing it. But I like the idea of marking it opportunity zone. Maybe you don't even run it all the way over there. Maybe you stub it up on the other side of the street, so that it can get there if we need it to get there.
And I'm comfortable with opportunity zone, but I, I would like to keep the option open. You know, active recreation is subjective. There are some folks that it is active for them to go to a dog park. You know, they might not be in a position or have the ability to be active in a really aerobic kind of way, and this is a recreation for them. And I think considering the location, the proximity, you know, with the road, I would like to keep it on the table.
Yeah, it's opportunity that'll be decided. It's best use after we get going. Like I said, I could live with that. I hope our new dog park on Solomon turns out to be fantastic for everyone, because it's only going to be a dog park. It's not going to be a mixed. I'm really excited to see how that works out, but, okay. Everybody ready to move off lower park? Okay, want to go to the next part of it?
So here's the upper park area. You can see the secondary access coming from over in the rifle range area. The more we talked about this with Parks and Rec Commission and Open Space Advisory, don't really see that as probably a paved access. Also, the more we talked about it with transportation, the likelihood of where that enters Highway 50 would likely need to be a right-in, right-out only, without major investment into, you know, turn pockets, that sort of thing along Highway 50. So what I'm envisioning here would be some bar gates, and that is just opened for one-way exit only, maybe, or possibly access, but that would only be used in large events, when you're going to pack all that upper parking, and if we have an emergency, we need to get people out right now. Then we've got some drainage, the areas defined for those drainage basins. I'm nearing 90% in the drainage design. This, that design plan started when this master plan started, and when the field design started. We've had some real hangups trying to design around the high-pressure pipe pipeline that goes through there. We need to cross it three or four times. So getting answers out of Southwest Gas, and working with the consultant team on that, and how to do that, or make it happen, has slowed that progress down. But like I mentioned before, that is one of my top priorities. We do have $600,000 funding right now to start Phase One of some of that drainage. And then the fields project, the lowest, the southernmost detention basin there, which would be directly east of tennis, we actually started about a third of that for the drainage that comes off the field. So that's cut right now. It's in there.
That number 10 next to the stalls, is that the one you're talking about?
Next, east of the 80-stall overflow parking lot, yeah. That's sandwiched between the course. Yeah, so we've built the southern, I'd say about third or 30, 40% of that right now. So this also shows additional improvements around tennis, which would be pretty light. It's mostly going to be the plaza, which I'm taking care of some of that right now with leftover funds from the courts. And then that 80-stall overflow parking lot could help serve softball tournaments, or sports tournaments at the top, and tennis. Parking is an issue up there. We need more of it. Then we're showing a trailhead up at the far north. The trailhead already exists. This would really just be some improvements. We're kind of envisioning similar to the Fifth Street Trailhead, probably vault toilet, a small picnic shelter, couple ADA spaces, and that's about it. Pretty minimal there. A kiosk, some maps, stuff like that. And then the, for the bike park, they, working with Ride Carson City and Muscle Powered, they had requested like eight to 10 acres. The initial one acre that is shown within the black dashed line is kind of the area that we needed to make room for within, you know, the core area of Centennial, Upper Centennial Park, that kind of occupies the area adjacent to Heritage Way. It's, we have a lot of land north of there, so didn't want to restrict, the one acre wasn't going to work for them. Like I said, they requested approximately eight to 10 acres. It is kind of undetermined exactly where that may lie. That's why item number nine is just kind of shaded. It, we know it would be out in that general vicinity. They were looking for, we told them we needed the bike park approved as part of this master plan before they could really entertain anything else. They need to, they will have to enter into design in agreement with the city. We cross that bridge once we get there. But this was the initial first step, is just making sure it's okay that Centennial is the appropriate place to put the bike park. And I think that's about it at the top for changes, really.
Okay Supervisor Giomi, you have questions on the upper park?
Questions on the, I thought I turned that on. On the detention basin that's just to the south of number eight, is that a necessary area for there to be a detention basin? I mean, does it have to be, and the reason I'm asking is because of that, that bike park component, because it seems like a natural to be able to wrap that together there, and then extend it out into the, isn't some of that land where nine is BLM land? Or is it, is it?
No, this is all, it's all us.
It's all Carson City property. How far, so we go quite a ways in that direction, then? How far, so we go quite a ways in that direction then, that we have ownership?
North, I want to say it's 240 acres.
Okay, I, I, okay, hold on just a second. So 115 Mo is, and 1156 is city? Parks, okay. That kind of answers the question. It, it, it doesn't really, I was trying to get a little more land adjacent to Mills Park for the bike component, but if you need it for detention and all of that other stuff above there is available, then it's a moot point. I, I think there's plenty of land there that, that they can, you know, perhaps even use the, the exit way as an access to some of it, you know, as long as they're only on bikes, right? Going down that, past the bar gate, maybe we can come up with a way to get, be able to get bikes around the bar gate to be able to tie that all together.
Right.
Again, I, I'm way farther in the weeds than we need to be for right now. Yeah, that was my only question. I think the rest of the design is good, utilizing that, that dead space or what's been dead space down there for where the 80 stalls are going, I think is a, is a good use. Years ago, they used to launch model rockets from there. I don't know if Curtis remembers that or Lisa. There's a model rocket club that used to launch model rockets from there until they started a couple of fires and we had to kind of say, no, you really can't do that anymore. So, yeah, that's it for me. Thanks for now.
Does, I don't see anyone else with a question on this one, so go, continue?
That.
Okay, does any other members have any questions? Okay, let me go to a public comment on this, please. And we did get, just for the public, we did have late material that we all read that people sent in for support, especially of the bike portion for Centennial Park. So Mr. French?
Thank you, Mayor Denny French, Carson City, Nevada. The detention basins are a concern to me as far as the microplasticity. There was going to be considered filtering or at least monitoring of materials before they went on to the golf course. And it seems to me that those detention basins then would then go into that area, flow into that golf course area underground or through it. And the detention basins are set to percolate in and, and out to keep themselves empty. I know that some of the mitigation percolation and such is not happening at the development at Anderson Ranch. Lomp is a considerable concern. And then at the new apartments off of Route, those basins are now ponds. And I'm wondering if that then would become a pond area or if it's designed to percolate into and out of the golf course areas. And if so, the habitat below that, which is wetland sort of, of sort, is all downhill. And so my concerns are for that. And then I also have a bit of concerns about those streets. Anyplace you're going to have people crossing from one activity to another, speed limits, slowdowns and such like that. But I am concerned about the, what we're considering mitigation. I have some concerns about those considerations where they are. And if we're determined that it's going to flow through, that's one thing. If we're going to want to percolate it, that's another. If we're going to filter it, that's another, which would add a great deal to your drainage considerations. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for your time. I'm Dan Thornton. I am a board member with Muscle Powered and the founder of Ride Carson City, pretty much the spearhead behind this bike park project. We're here after eight years of effort. The first people started this project with the city going back eight years ago. I've had it for the last two. I've been really pleased at the work we've been able to do with the Carson City Parks and Recreation. They've been really supportive and helped guide us through this project. I did want to address the question that you had at the beginning, which is about the space. And things are going to be tight in there. Not only is the one acre, and I appreciate the work we've done at, but the one acre that is shown along there is also bisected by those two high-pressure gas lines. So with easements, the thing is, yes, we have the space going forward and we'll, we'll definitely work on that. But there are some aspects of a bike park that need to not be on a hillside, like a pump track and some things like that. So we're just hoping that we can work through all that with that detention basin and the high-pressure gas lines. So I just want to thank staff and also want to talk about how we're looking forward to continue our work with the city on an agreement that outlines how we'll partner on building, operating and caring for the park. That collaboration will be key to the long-term success of the, of the project. And an approval today is not an endpoint. We're excited, but it's a beginning. We have significant work ahead, including launching a capital campaign, refining the design, managing construction and creating systems to operate and maintain this facility responsibly over the long term. This bike park represents years of grassroots organizing and we're grateful for the opportunity to continue building something that will serve Carson City families and riders for generations. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you so much. Supervisor. Oh wait, do I have any other public comment? I didn't see anybody. Oops, not cut anybody off by accident. Okay, I'll bring it back up here. Supervisor Giomi?
Yeah, I was just going to say that, you know, relative to the detention basin, we have a lot of, we have good examples of multi-use detention basins. So I think any, any place, and I think you guys will do this, but I just put it on the record that I think any location we can create a multi-use detention basin that serves multiple purposes is, is great. It could potentially almost double the space for the, for the bike component. You know, the bike thing is, I applaud whatever grassroots effort you can come up with, you know, with the, the city and residents of the city accomplished the same thing with Disc Golf Course. You know, with city support, but, but largely a grassroots effort. So definitely can be done. I know your work's cut out for you, but I think the bike component is a natural extension of what we have sort of put out there in this city with the Statina Bike Race, with the mountain bike race before that up in the hills behind Carson. And with all of the trails that we have and the connectivity that we have, I, to me, it's, it's a natural fit. So, you know, good luck. I applaud you and, you know, carry on. Thanks.
I, I want to echo that with Supervisor Giomi serving on the Park Foundation Board. I, I want to in advance, thank you for the future headaches you will have to fundraise and, and really get the design and things going. And having lived through the Disc Golf and the Rifle Range with groups that raised money to put in a vault restroom and so, but I just applaud you because the first thing starts with the first step, right? And just don't give up. And even if a little few rocks come your way or something, it's okay. It's a process. So thanks for your efforts in advance. So Supervisor White, you had a comment?
Thank you.
Question? Yeah.
Pretty much ditto's for what has been said. I think these partnerships, if you will, are really what makes our Carson City amenities really shine. A few concerns about what we're looking at today. When I pick up a document that says master plan, there are things I expect to find in that document. One is priorities, and there are none here. Secondly, again, while I am in full support of this bike park, we, we don't know what we're even talking about. I mean, we've done a great job of identifying various elements, which I do understand may or may not be developed on the lower end and even on the upper end. But when you put a $3.5 million price tag on an absolutely unknown, you don't know for sure where it's going to be. You don't know how many acres it's going to be. You don't know how it's going to be managed. I am uncomfortable with pushing this forward. I think it needs to go back to the department and get it a little more baked before we give a nod to a $3.5 million project that we, we just don't have any idea what it means. And testified here today, been working on this for eight years. And it's just not complete for me.
Supervisor Shutey?
Actually, Jen, you stepped up to comment, so I'd love to hear what you were going to say and then I'll share my comments, if that's all right.
Certainly. Ms. Budge?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jennifer Budge, Parks and Recreation Director. First, I want to compliment Nick. Putting together a master plan is a really arduous task. It is inviting stakeholders and a lot of adverse opinions and trying to get a collective vision for the community. So these are really difficult projects and I want to compliment Nick for his hard work and working with so many people that care about this park and the vision of it. We don't have a master plan for this park right now. There was no vision. A lot of the funding, as it became available, were things that were plopped down and sometimes not so thoughtfully. So we want to be thoughtful moving forward and I appreciate everybody's comments. I want to, you know, acknowledge Supervisor White's concerns and I just want to share what I think the next steps in the vision might be. A master plan has to be sort of from that 50,000-foot view. To implement these things through agreements and through these community partnerships are important and those things will form and those will be future items that this board will approve. So in my mind, this is a good first step for Muscle Powered and Ride Carson City to be able to start to fundraise and move forward. The eight years of work was, you know, analyzing different locations throughout the entire community. We were really looking at Western Nevada College. We were looking at a lot of other community partnerships and everything kept coming back to Centennial Park as the most viable alternative for this implementing a bike park. That use is already occurring up there. If you go up to Centennial and Upper Centennial, there are mountain bikers and people bike, biking all the time. So this is enabling like another more formalized version of that. There is access to federal lands there. I think this is a great federal lands access program, FLAP grant opportunity to possibly help fund the bike park, development of the trailhead and the alternative access where we need funding. This is also a great future Snipoma grant, Southern Nevada Public Lands Access Program grant. There are big projects. We could submit a Snipoma grant for the entire lower portion or sections like that. I think this is, is possible, but we have to have that vision to be able to go forward. For next steps of the bike park, this is how I envision it. And I'm happy to move and adjust, but just based on other projects. The Disc Golf Course is wonderful, but we didn't have a formalized agreement with a third party. We had amazing volunteers and a vision and they put in the blood, sweat and tears to make that project happen. But there was supposed to be a third-party partner and we don't have that. I don't want to repeat that component of it. Muscle Powered has come forward, Ride Carson City. We have a lot of passionate people with a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that are dedicated to making it happen and I believe they will. We have an amazing partnership and a current agreement with Muscle Powered for our trail system, which is wonderful. But what I would like to see, if it works for the board, is an MOU next step to enable them to fundraise and develop a plan and possibly design and moving forward. Once they're ready to move ground and actually do some improvements on the land, I envision a lease for a very specific amount of acreage, whatever that ends up being, and the board would have to approve that. We don't have to go out to bid for a lease with a nonprofit organization. We can directly work with a group as outlined in NRS. So I see that developing, but we need to be able to have a master plan that's approved so they can move forward.
Supervisor Shutey?
Thank you. That, that's really helpful. You know, I, I think about when this whole project came forward and talking about the improvements to the upper fields and to be able to bring in sports teams and be able to utilize the area throughout the year. And I see this, a bike park as an extension of that. You know, I have attended three different mountain bike clinics, traveled to Whistler, traveled to Park City. I still am a terrible trail rider, but I spent quite a bit of money in the process of learning how to ride and enjoying seeing the other areas and the travel. And I, I see this as, in addition to the wonderful recreation opportunities that mountain biking and trail riding provide, it also lends itself beautifully to utilizing this area. And as an aside, while, you know, I think about, I run a nonprofit and our initial mission to help build the animal shelter, once that shelter was built, we continued the fundraising and we put in a play yard, we purchased a vehicle. I say that in that I truly understand the nuts and bolts of being involved. You know, I think where there's passion and commitment, there's opportunity and I see a very committed group here and I see wonderful partners. So I'm absolutely in support of this.
I, I think I, I see something too is that even in line with the discussion of the dog park, now I can have the discussion with the bike park. I can't think of a better location that I think fits for a bike park, right? I, I'm just admitting in my mind that when I looked at this master plan, I am looking for what is congruent activities at which parks or that's the way my brain kind of works. And with the land that we have there and the activities, I can't think of something better than having an adult softball tournament maybe going on. And I want to encourage their families to come and that their children could get on the mountain bikes or the other members of the family. So I see this as a perfectly congruent design for the park. And so I also think that the master plan, as we've said today, is not all the details because it's just an overarching plan of what do I expect to have in this park or what am I trying to achieve in this park? That's really what a master plan is, my overarching ideals. And so I can't think of a better place for me right now in Carson City of where we would put the bike park and especially when we have willing partners. I do like part of Supervisor White's discussion, and I'm not sure on priorities, right? And, and I'm not sure that whether or not in a master plan we should, should or should not because you don't know what grants are out there. And so if you label something a priority and it's like, darn it, now I can't submit this, but this grant was wide open for something that might be our third priority versus our first. But I actually understand what he's getting to that, oh, what would we be going after first if we can? But I think that might be a different discussion when you get into.
Fungible, too.
Right.
Right?
Right, that it's fungible.
Because today, priority number one seems like a good idea.
Right.
If that money doesn't show up, then we obviously have to shift gears and get something else done.
Right.
I mean, nothing is chiseled in concrete necessarily.
Right.
And that's my point is, I, I don't, I don't feel like we've been provided with a, a good direction of where we're going.
You, you don't think a bike park would be good there?
Say that again?
You don't think a bike park is a good idea for Centennial? Or you're not sure yet?
I said right from the beginning, I support the bike park.
You do?
100% support the bike park. But what is the bike park? I mean, we've gone to the effort to say we're going to have 450 parking stalls on the lower. We know that might not be 450. It might be 500, it might be 300. But we have zero idea about the bike park, zero, other than a price list of $3.5 million. What, what, what's the next? What's the next step? Do you create the partnership? Do you work on easements? Do you put in for a grant? What's the next step for the bike park? It's not there.
Supervisor Giomi?
You know, I agree with you, Mayor, about, I mean, a master plan has to be nimble because we don't know where the funding is going to come from. So a master plan isn't a final plan, it's a schematic. It's an allocation of space. Even the costs that we're allocating are just for you to give us an idea as to where we are. The bike park may be able to be built for a million dollars, but it may cost $10 million. I don't think we know. Too many variables. When? How big? You know, if you build it now, it's X. If you build it in 10 years, it's X plus, you know, 100, whatever the case may be. I'm comfortable with the plan. I think it's nimble enough that it can, I would be very reluctant to put priorities into the master plan. It will hurt us, in my opinion, when we go for grants. It will hurt us. That's my opinion. Along those lines, and I had a note, so thank you for bringing up the FLAP component, because I had a note buried in here that I forgot to bring up, but I think we should put somewhere in the plan that we want to create access to federal lands. So we need to just, it's a single sentence, you could call it out however you'd like, but I think having that in there with us approving it will help a lot when we go for a FLAP grant, assuming those still exist. You know, I mean, we don't really know whether they're existing. And the Ash Canyon one, as we know, was underfunded, grossly underfunded, but who knows? So I, but I think that would help. So that's my comment. I'm...
I don't see any other comments, so unless I'm missing it, I think we're like ready for a motion and it was to accept it with the addition of some language for access to federal lands and that the dog park, you guys had said opportunity zone, do you just think we should label it future use?
It's the same thing, I think.
I don't know. So I, okay, I'm okay. You guys want it opportunity?
Make that a motion since you said it.
Nick Wentworth, Parks Project Manager. We used the term opportunity zone in the Mills Park master plan.
I can live with it.
Maybe for consistency.
Okay. So certainly, I make, I move to approve the John D. Winters Centennial Park master plan with a change to the dog parks to be labeled opportunity zone and that we add discussion for access to federal lands as one of the components of the master plan.
Second.
I have a motion as second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Let the record reflect it was unanimous. And please thank park commission staff, everyone. Fine job, right? Maybe we can, I don't know, we're getting 15 million on a Mills Park Snipola. I don't know how willing they're going to be to give us another 15 or 30 million, but let's keep trying anyway.
I didn't think we were going to get 15 million, honestly. But, you know, there's only so many counties that can apply for that Southern Nevada money and...
We have good plans?
And we're one of them and good plans gets us there and, you know, Vegas is not shrinking, so.
Keep selling and putting money in the account for us, yeah. But again, thank you, Nick, too. Really, nice job. Okay, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 17A, which is discussion and possible action on whether to order and direct the treasurer to sell after giving notice properties that have not paid their taxes, et cetera. Andrew, do you have something that you need to share with us?
For the record, Andrew Razor, Carson City Treasurer. Consistent with what we submitted in the agenda item, there are only three properties that are going to tax deed sale this year. Last year there was 15, this year it's significantly less. And as I've previously mentioned in other presentations to you, Nevada revised statute essentially defines how the tax sale process works. Everything to end, we have to provide the notice when we file the treasure certificate, which is a lien to the two-year redemption period, and if that's not paid within that time, then that transfers to a deed. Again, there's a difference between a lien and a deed. The deed now authorizes the county treasurer to move forward to sell that property to recover any taxes, penalties, and other fees out to Carson City. So I'm not sure if you have any questions, but again, we just have the three properties going for tax or for presentations this week.
I don't see anyone with any questions on this. Is there any public comment on this item? You have public comment? Come on in. You have to push the button once and it'll turn the little dial green and state your name for the record and...
My name is Kimberly Green and I'm here on the matter of the property of 2620 East Nine Lane. My ex-husband bought this property 10 years ago. He has mental health issues. He has been being abused as a vulnerable adult for the last four years. Squatters, homeless, domestic violence, fires, drug busts. I had people evicted off this property during the pandemic because they had just overrun this property. And then, geez, I think there was a federal bust there in April and nobody's done anything to get rid of the drug dealer there. Nobody's done anything to get rid of the people that just throw trash on the ground. There's no sanitation, there's no garbage, there's no water, there's no electricity. And Monty's been through the justice system three times since then with drug charges and this and that. No counseling, no mental health assessment. I think it's a damn shame that he's going to have his property taken away from him because the proper authorities didn't follow through and give him an opportunity to clean this up. He doesn't even know what day it is. This man has not taken a shower for three years and before that it was five years. He's broken into my trailer that's been on the property since 2017. I did a successful probation and I've been clean for almost nine years now. I did it on that property. And then when my son asked me to come and stay with him and help him with his daughter, that's when all of this horrible stuff started happening. Monty was evicted from his property four years ago and it's just, it's gone downhill since then. He gets money every month. He's on disability. He was a firefighter. He hurt his back fighting fires for BLM. In 1987, I set up his disability. These people know he gets money and they're taking advantage of him and I think it, my son will not have anything from his father because this is happening today. And I know that there was something that could have been done a long time ago about this and it's, I don't know what else to say. I've lost almost everything I ever had because of this man and I'm still here fighting for him because nobody should be treated like this. Nobody should be ignored like this. Nobody should be allowed to take advantage of somebody who can't take care of themselves. What's going to happen to him now? Is there going to be any assisted living? Is there going to be any direction or counseling or mental health or anything, anything for this man? Nothing. He's a seventh-generation Nevadan. His grandfather was the head of the cattleman's association in this state. He has family Smithsonian Institute exhibit for being one of the first ranching families in Paradise Valley, Nevada. And I don't think somebody that can't take care of themselves should be just discarded and pushed under the rug. Yeah, there's, I was there three days ago. I threw five people off that property and two of them were drug dealers. And I told them I was taking pictures of their car and I was going to send it to the sheriff's department. And you did not see these people drive away fast enough. Unacceptable. Unacceptable. Thank you very much for your time.
Is there any other public comment on this item? Mr. French?
Thank you, Mayor. Danny French, Carson City, Nevada. This was not on my radar at all. However, I have, I cannot come up with the word. There is a position in this town that takes care of people or at least looks out to what is, okay, so I don't know, but you all do.
A guardian.
Did that, the guardian, Judge Guardian? Guardian, thank you. And I know Mr. Razor has done conscientious efforts to make sure people do not lose their homes over $100 debt in taxes. In this case, I don't know what's owed, but I would hope that the monies from the sale could be utilized to give him a grant towards the care that he needs or at least the observation. And so, I mean, I know he, well, see, I can't direct people personally, but I do appreciate the efforts by the tax commissioner and all that they've done, but in this case, I think somebody slipped through and that's unfortunate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Supervisor Shutey?
Thank you. Mr. Razor, can you explain the process, how this works? And in the event there's a sale, what happens with the proceeds?
Yes, so again, Andrew Razor, Carson City Treasurer. So when the Carson City Treasurer issued the tax deed against this property after the first Monday in June, that started the process and then we presented to you for that review and approval. The date that we're asking for is April 22nd of 2026 and we'd use an online bid for assets platform is what it's called. And what would happen then is it would be, the minimum bid would be for what is owed in the taxes, penalties, and other fees that are owed to Carson City to include the water delinquencies. And then depending on how much those excess proceeds are, that has to sit aside per Nevada law for at least one year. And not only would we pay off what is owed to Carson City, but if anybody made a claim, so any property owner or anybody that has a registered, I guess, title to that property as under 361-585, then they could submit for those excess proceeds. And so let's just say, for example, that the property sold for $100,000, that was the winning bid, then that excess proceeds would sit in the separate account per Nevada law. And this also goes back to the previous discussions we've had before the board is with the new change with Assembly Bill 133 this year in the Nevada Legislature. 5% of any excess proceeds would then be submitted for Treasure Tech Fund and the remaining would go to the county if nobody submitted for that excess proceeds. But if, in this case, using Mr. Fuller's property, for example, and the example that Ms. Green was asking about, or Mr. French was asking about, is those excess proceeds, he would be entitled to that as the registered owner. And then after reviewing that, the treasurer, me, and then also with Carson City District Attorney's Office, if we determined that he has a rightful claim to it, then we would award those excess proceeds. So again, if, let's say that he had $100,000 in excess proceeds and we paid off, and then anything would go then to Mr. Fuller. And then that's how that would work. So he would have that claim to that money.
Thank you. Supervisor Horton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to direct the city manager to contact the sheriff and have him go by and do, maybe the most team, do a welfare check on the occupant at that address. I think that'd be appropriate at this time. I'm also prepared to make a motion if there's no further discussion.
I don't see any further discussion, a motion. Supervisor Horton?
I move to direct the Carson City Treasurer to sell each property described on the record in accordance with NRS 361.595.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Let the record reflect it was unanimous. We're now on to our non-action items. Does anyone have anything to share? Oh, we had a quiet couple of weeks. This is great. Okay, we'll go to our final public comment.
Sorry, I will share one thing.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Just room tax revenue down significantly in September, anticipating it down in October, November as well. You know, I think some of it has to do with the federal shutdown. I think some of it has to do with the general state of the economy and uncertainty. So right now, CTA is looking at a million-dollar off projection for the fiscal year. We would still be at the same level as last fiscal year, but we have projected a million-dollar increase and, you know, now we're projecting basically flat. So just to keep you posted, also on the CTA website, the visitor report for Carson City, which the state does, was that our last agenda? It's there if you're interested, talks about, you know, expenditure, expenditure by visitors, the locations they come from, and just some interesting information. It's there.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to final public comment. Mr. French?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you Supervisor Horton for the deal and also Mr. Razor for his deal and for Supervisor Shutey's request to have a little more explanation on how it proceeds. At the legislative session, man, I think I was just lost or I'm not usually the one that's the sharpest on certain subjects, but at least a lot of senators and assembly people were just as lost and befuddled as I was as to what was considered emergency and what wasn't. Also, e-bike situation was brought up. There had been three fatalities in a boom, boom, boom amount of time and they're all youth-related and around school and their considerations and concerns, and I think the city needs to address e-bike and the accessibility to school facilities and/or even perhaps adding an age requirement or a training program. It's not enough to slow down drivers if you can't slow down the kids running across the street. So that was brought up in a very sad circumstance of things, but as far as my experience with the legislature, I found it exhaustingly frustrating at times, but I met amazing people. Everything from people with the trades to the staff, to the assembly and supervisors, just because I happened to be sitting in the right spot. So I would have recommended this to anyone that had any time at all to have gotten there, but at the same time, you had to be patient and you had to find a way to be comfortable. But I do want to say, I'm back, but I'm not back. I will be restricting my time here for a lot of different reasons, but to me, artificial turf and being prepared as safeguards of the children is my priority besides the universe and the environment. So that, you'll see me when those things ring up and don't be surprised, but I do appreciate your efforts. It may not be in the total agreement and I have my frustrations and we'll talk individually. Thank you.
Do you have any other? Yes?
Oh, you can just push the button, it'll turn green and then, in your name, and go ahead.
On item, the parks, item 16, Parks and Recreation. My name's Jim Davis. I'm with the Clear Creek Bowman. And we have a problem on entry into the archery range and it's, it's not a major problem. We have a gate. It's public land and it's accessible to anyone. If the gate's left open, the archery club always gets, you guys left the gate open and the horses are getting out. The horses come from the south also. They don't just come from the north and go to the river. They come from the river and come in. The gate is closed and normally closed and if they can't get through, they turn around and cross the highway, cross 50 again, going south, back to the river for water. And so it's a constant hassle between us and the horse people. And if there's any improvements done, I would just like to recommend that a cattle guard go in there. That would eliminate the problem and probably a squeeze that would...
That would help.
A horse could, you know, it's just a V-shaped where the fence comes.
Right.
Just a squeeze that goes to the north from the south, they could squeeze through, but they wouldn't come back. Anyway, that, I think it would eliminate a lot of problems and it would be a fairly cheap... proposition to fix the problem.
Thank you.
Anyway, I appreciate you, sorry I'm late and I appreciate you letting me speak. Thank you.
Most welcome and thank you for all your volunteer efforts there and stuff. We really thank you. Okay, do I, anybody else? Just making sure? Okay. Then with that, we will adjourn as the board of supervisors and we'll wait a couple of minutes and we'll... and we'll wait a couple of minutes and we'll be done. No, we're done. We don't have a closed session. Not this meeting, wrong meeting. No closed session. First I thought we were going to have one, but next one. Okay. Have a great day, and thank you.